Rise for the pledge of the flag and remains standing for a moment of individual reflection. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, for the budget work session, I want to first throw it over to you, Dr. Valley.
I just wanted to say a couple of words, and that is that, you know, everything, like everything here in Lancaster, it's a team effort, and I'd like to thank the building administrators who worked on their building budgets, as well as the department chairs, and there's multiple committees, like, for example, the Schedule D Committee, who have input on these, a lot of these decisions, and done their recommendations and thoughts, et cetera, et cetera. So also thanks to each and every one of the DO administrators, who takes a lot of time to do their individual budgets for their individual departments, and, you know, a part of this, too, is also the grants. You know, John Armstrong has all kinds of grants, and Karen Markey always spends all kinds of time working on UPK grants, UPK grants, and those kind of things, so those all come into play there, too. So thanks to all of them, and thanks to a business office, who, along with Jamie Phillips, worked to pull all this stuff together and then make some sense out of it. So myself and the Board of Education can listen to presentations like this and ultimately ask questions and make decisions. So thanks to everyone for their pieces. I think tonight will be a continuation of that team effort. We'll hear from quite a few administrators presenting their budgets. I look forward to some good questions, and I'll pass it over to Jamie. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. V. Tonight, on our agenda, we have the tax cap calculation. Staffing requests the full instructional portion of the budget, which is a significant portion of our overall budget. So, and then also our BOCES budget. So I will jump right in with the tax caps. So our tax levy limit calculation, or the 2% cap, if you will, as it's better known by, which is never 2%, that is due to New York State by March 1st. So I actually completed it and submitted it last week. So this is our official maximum tax levy calculation for the 21-22 school year. It is the calculation, it is not necessarily what will be included in the budget, but tonight we'll just walk through the actual calculation. Give me, bear with me while I screen share, I'm on like my regular computer, two screens and my Chromebook. Okay, does that, is that the tax cap calculation up? Anybody?
That is, yes.
Thank you. All right, so the 21-22 tax levy limit calculation, as you know, the 2% is not just 2%. There are a variety of factors that go into the calculation, so I'll walk you through them tonight. First, we take our prior year's levy, which was $56.9 million. That is the levy that was included in last year's budget, and then that we set in August to create our tax rates. We get to factor in a tax base growth factor, which for Lancaster for 21-22 is 1.28%. That fat growth factor is set annually by New York State each year, and it's district-specific, and it's based on assessed value growth within the community. Every district gets a tax base growth factor, but it is different for every district. We then also get to factor in the allowable levy growth, which is where the 2% figure comes from, and that figure is set annually by New York State, but it is the same for every school district. So it is going to be, always going to be 2% or the CPI, whatever is less. And then, so for this year, it is 1.23%, so significantly below 2%. We're also allowed to factor in any carryover from last year's cap calculation that we didn't levy, which for us is just under $39,000. Our pilots that we received this year, and our pilots that we're estimating to receive next year, which are payments in lieu of taxes, so they are agreements that the local IDAs have put in place with properties, and they have a special agreement, so instead of being as part of the tax levy, they instead pay an amount set forth in the pilot. There's also various exclusions and exemptions to the formula. Two of them are if the pension system, the ERS pension system and the TRS pension system, if their contribution rates are over 2% increase, which they are not expected to be, so we had no exemption there. We also have exclusions for our debt service payments, but that also factors in aid and use of reserves. So our two exclusions are actually, for this year and for next year, are actually negative, so the exclusion that's out to zero. On the bottom here, we have the calculation. So it takes the current year levy, multiplies it by our tax base growth factor, adds in our current year pilots receivable, multiplies that by the CPI, subtracts out what we're estimating for next year to receive our pilots, adds in the prior year cap carryover, the $39,000, and that is where we come up with the tax levy limit. We don't have any exclusions to subtract, so our maximum tax levy for 21-22, the calculation is $58.4 million, which is just one, which is $1.5 million increase over this current year, and that is a 2.58% increase on the tax levy. Within our calculation, that $1.5 million, about $729,000, comes from our growth factor. About $729,000 comes from our, the CPI calculation, and then we had that about $40,000 from carryover from last year. We have, the assessed value for next year is not set by the town yet. They do have a deadline of March 1st to put some initial numbers, submit some initial numbers into the state. So at this point, we do not know how this plays out in terms of an estimated tax rate, but that is something that we would hope to be able to estimate in April at our next budget work session. Does anybody have any questions on the tax levy calculation? Great. I will move on to our staffing requests. I will ask for Dr. Valley and Dr. Kufel to chime in here. As part of the budget process, we allow the building principals and department supervisors to submit requests for staffing, whether it's reductions in staffing or additions in staffing. This year, we have very minimal submissions, so we have one position here on the instructional side as a request. We have no non-instructional requests for staffing changes. And then also on this page that I have up right now, we also have some Schedule D extracurricular requests. So I will turn it over to Dr. Kufel to discuss the teacher for William Street that is on the staffing request.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. As you can see, yes, requesting one FT, one full-time equivalent teacher at the 4-6 level due to enrollment and the increased enrollment expectations, kind of that we talked about last board meeting. So that's really the only, the only projected request that we have.
It does not necessarily mean that there's not ebbs and flows at other school districts or within grade levels, correct? It just means that when it all pans out, we're expecting to need just one additional teacher.
That is correct.
Thank you. The Schedule D and E requests, these are actually the same as they were last year. We have contractually a committee that meets four members from the LCTA and four members from administration to review these requests every year. So these are the stipends that our coaches and advisors of clubs and activities receive for their advising services or their coaching services. And they have, there's a process in which they can submit documentation that shows how much activity that their club has, how many students they're serving, how much time and effort they are putting in with the club, and request a change in either the stipend level that they're on, or if it's a club that does not receive a stipend, that they start to receive a stipend. They're required, before they request a new stipend, the club is required to be board-approved, so everything on here already exists and already has been approved. And if it's new, once it's approved by the board, they have to operate for at least a year before they can request a stipend. So all of these requests were approved by the committee. This does not include requests that were not approved by the committee, and these were all approved in 2021 and then revisited this past January. They just unfortunately didn't make it into the final budget last year, so they are back on the table to be included in the budget. So all in all, between salary and benefits for these staffing requests for 2021, it equates to just over $65,000. Of the requests that you see on the sheet are included in the instructional budget that will be presented to you in just a couple of minutes. But obviously, finalizing the budget in April will be the determinant of whether we are moving forward with any of these requests. Does anybody have any questions on the staffing requests? Okay, thank you. I need to move my screen around a little bit, give me a second, okay. So now we'll move on to the instructional portion of the budget. What we will present tonight basically includes everything related to student instruction and student services. I have Dr. Kufel, Patricia Bruce, and John Armstrong with me tonight to discuss most of this budget, so you'll get a little bit of a break from me talking. Before we move on to that, I would like to take a few minutes to recognize and probably embarrass Pat Bruce. Tonight is Pat's last budget presentation of her career and her last week as the Information Services Manager at Lancaster Schools. Her retirement date is effective this coming Friday. So Pat has been a 30-year employee of the district. She's worked her way through the ranks. She has been a computer aide, then microcomputer technician, and then she has held the IS manager position for the past 18 years.
Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, Bruce. You're not done. I was hoping you were.
No, no, that didn't even get embarrassing yet. I just realized that I should, I'd like to see your face while I'm talking, so I had to stop screen sharing. So a really significant technology infrastructure project about 10 years ago really increased our abilities within the district technology-wise, and Pat really rose to the occasion. Just a few of the initiatives she has spearheaded since then, a new email system, a voice-over-IP phone systems, new security systems, our Google platform, Chromebook introduction, Z-Space, centralized printing, bus Wi-Fi, disaster recovery planning, education, law, 2D implementation, cybersecurity measures, and most recently, and probably the most epic, an impromptu one-to-one initiative brought on by the pandemic, planning that, rolling it out, and distribution, distributing devices to 6,000 students in response to the pandemic within a couple of weeks' time. But I really could go on and on with that list of her accomplishments. We were really once considered pretty middle-of-the-road, I think, in terms of technology access within our school district, and the district has since really become leaders in instructional technology in this area, and Pat was the driving force of that. Her work includes a considerable amount of planning, often on a multi-year basis, and she has to collaborate with both me on the financial side and the instructional leaders of the district. I don't know which is worse. Although, while executing it, while maximizing our state aid, E-rate, smart schools, and BOCES funds. So she spends a decent amount of money, but she also maximizes the money we're getting in return for that. So I certainly appreciate that. It's been really amazing to watch Pat grow and to work alongside of her throughout the accomplishments. She has grandkids and dog therapy, and probably still worrying about her long-term plans here at the district and how they're panning out to look forward to in her retirement. I thank her for her dedicated service to the district, and then also really for the great relationship we've had for the last 11 years while I've worked here. So I wish her well in her golden years, and will just use this last moment to admit that I probably only understood about 50% of what she ever was talking about. Congratulations, Pat. You will be missed particularly by me.
And I'll jump in and just say that she also has my all-time favorite voicemail that I saved, and every once in a while, I'll listen to it, you know, and it's about a server that was going up and down, crashing and all this kind of stuff, and it just makes me chuckle. She fixed that, too, in the end. And like I began, it's about team, and each one of these people are important. Each one of these people are part of the team, so I just wanted to echo Jamie's remarks and to thank you, Pat, for your many years of service and dedication to this school district and its children and adults. The reliance on technology and teaching and learning has grown exponentially during your time, probably more than any other time period of history. And in this role and this, in this position, the IT demands, and you personally, and our IT team here as a whole in Lancaster has been huge. You've done a remarkable job, and I just wanted to publicly acknowledge all that you've done and say thank you, and I wish you the best for you and your family as you go on to your next adventure in your life, so congratulations.
Wow, thank you. Thank you so much for all of that. It is an understatement to say that without this team administrative in my department, we couldn't have, we couldn't have done it, and it's exciting. We all have passion. My, my department, they're a bunch of passionate folks that it's always about the children. So I've been honored to be part of this team and bring in Lancaster right out front. I agree with that. We are frontrunners. We, we are the district that people look to when they're trying to have initiatives, a second circuit at William Street. People are copying our design. I'm very proud of this district to be part of all of this and my department. What a group, what a group. Thank you so much for your support. Jamie for the money, Dr. Valley for the money. I certainly do know how to spend it, but all for good things. I remember Ed Mishka used to say, "Get out of here, I don't have any left." But I always got the support. I'd come in and ask, and with, with the proposal and the design, and I got the support pretty much 100% of the time, and I think, I thank everyone.
Later on in this presentation, we, later on in this presentation, we cut your circuit, though, just so you know.
Oh, no.
I'm just kidding. Just kidding. This is not something.
Thank you again. Thank you very much.
I will say, I was trying to think of what the second circuit was called to add it to my speech, and I couldn't think of it, so I just left it off. That's where I said many more. So it goes along with my high-level technology knowledge, but congratulations, Pat.
Thank you again. I'll miss everyone. Thank you.
Congratulations, Pat. Thank you so much.
All right, back down to business. Let me screen share again, bear with me. All right, does it look like a budget on the screen?
Yes.
All right, great. You, all right, so before I turn it over to Dr. Kufel and Mr. Armstrong and Bruce, I will say there's several common themes in this section. So first of all, this section of the budget that we're reviewing with you tonight is over 60% of the overall budget. As I mentioned earlier, this part of the budget is everything directly related to students, so from building administration, teachers, teacher aides, bus drivers, counselors, our occupational ad at BOCES, our special education services, summer school, the list goes on and on, literally everything that has to do with students. With this being 60% of the budget, you know that we're in the people business. Most of our budget is allocated to employees who provide instructional services. So 78% of this, of this section of the budget is attributed to salaries, and the wages of 968 of our, our 982 regular employees are part of this section of the budget. We'll see a few common themes throughout. For any of the salary codes, the increases are contractual salary obligations. Any time that an amount is going to vary, either more or less, from a contractual salary obligation, that will be something that we will note and discuss with you. This part, this whole section of the budget is also a hybrid. Some of them, some of the sections and some of the amounts are full amounts that we've received from the buildings or the departments, so they're their full requests. But then there's also some parts that I've already made some changes to based on our overall financial picture and, you know, past history. So it is, this is also definitely not a final end product. This is this portion of the budget and where we're at right now. And to reiterate, it does include those staffing requests that we just discussed. So with all of that being said, I will turn it over to the crew. Dr. Kufel, you are up first.
Got to unmute, Andy.
Oh, it's not a meeting unless someone's on mute.
It was a go-to opening, too. That was pretty solid. I'll try to reenact it. Thank you, Ms. Phillips, and once again, congratulations, Pat Bruce. I enjoyed working with you, and I'm going to miss working with you. Good luck in your next, next chapter, and enjoy tonight's last hurrah. But 2010 curriculum development and supervision, we'll start there, because that's first on the list. You, you will see that all of those, as Jamie has already mentioned, that there are four increases there. All increases are due to contractual salary increases, and that's in the 27,480 in total. Okay, so if we go down to the next, next title there, and next code, we have 2020 Supervision Regular Schools. So there are a few increases right from the top, and you'll see that those increases, similarly as Ms. Phillips said, those are related to contractual increases. The first one, 2020, 150, it's a little bit different from some of the other ones in that we have replaced the previous middle school principal, Mr. Krasinski, with Ms. Lackey, and that, that accounts for the, the difference there in the 0.75% increase. Couple of decreases overall, also due to some contractual obligations and enrollment. Overall, in 2020 Supervision Regular Schools, looking at a 1.76% increase, and the vast majority is due to salary increases. Similarly, as Ms. Phillips said, there are some, some common themes. 2020 Supervision of Pupil Personnel, you're looking at a 3.28% total increase in this, this title, and that entire increase is due to contractual raises. The remaining line items there are remaining 0% increases.
2040 is for Continuing Education, so our, our Community Education Program. It's coupled with 2330, which we'll discuss a little bit later. Both of the 2040 code and the 2330 code are offset on the revenue side by the fees that are paid by participants of the Community Education Program. So the only change in this section is a contractual increase for the part-time clerical staff for the program. Oh, I also have 2060, so 2060, 490 is for several BOCES costs, a lot of the BOCES costs associated with support services for the school district. We have health and safety staff that we receive through a BOCES service, management of our AEDs, GAZB 45 audit valuation, our financial service, a safety consultant, and a school physician. New this year is the school physician. We contract with Forestream, Dr. Price, but, and that has always been direct contract with her. The state has approved a CLOSER, where we're now able to have our medical director contract through BOCES and receive BOCES aid on that. So we'll see later in the budget where the meta, school medical director has been taken out of the nursing services part of the budget and has been added in here. There is no change in the service we're going to receive. It will just be, honestly, so that amount of money that we're spending, we receive back, BOCES aid back on it in the following year. So it's really a great change, same expenditure level, but an increase in our state aid revenue.
Jamie, what, so this is huge, I, I think, because, you know, I don't know if, if it's you that looks out for these things, but it's amazing that you're finding these, you know, ways of being efficient, getting money back using BOCES. So this is huge, I think, in my estimation, and I think it probably goes to you.
Thank you. We always are looking for ways to save money or enhance our revenue streams. BOCES introduced it to us as a new service about a month ago, and I discussed it with the school physician to make sure that she would be okay with that, and it really seemed like a no-brainer. Typically, BOCES services are only approved by New York State if they're shared between districts, but I think that it, because it's a requirement, and possibly because of the role that they're playing, the increased role that they're playing currently in the pandemic, they recognized that it was a valuable service to districts and that it was something that they would be able to allow through BOCES in order for us to attribute some aid to it. So we will take those chances every time they're presented to us.
And now we can keep Pat's circuit.
Yeah, 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 close.
All right, jump back in. 2070 In-Service Training. You'll see the first two items there remain flat with a slight increase of 0.75%. And the third one, the third, 2070, 490, once again with BOCES. Our Instructional Resource Team, where we get support and Our instructional resource team where we get support in math, ELA, science, social studies, PE, IDeb, some of our professional development, including workshops and trainings that we either send our teachers to or bring BOCs folks in, always in that, that, that line. And the increases there are due to service fee increases. 2110 teaching regular school. You'll see the first 2110 120 in terms of teacher salary K6. Contractual instructional raises are there, but also, as we just mentioned a few moments ago, the additional teacher request at the K6 46 level due to the enrollment estimates that we discussed the last meeting. Several of the other increases in this, this area are due to contractual raises. I do want to point out that 2110 150, and I'm also going to lump 2110 490. You see pretty significant decreases there. However, that's a reassignment of costs, so those costs are not going away. Those costs are for our ENL services and English language learner services. It's an update in the New York State Uniform Account Codes. So you're gonna see them later on in the presentation. And, and these decreases here will be increases somewhere else, but there's really no change overall. I also want to call your attention to 2110 473. Similarly, last board meeting when we talked about the enrollment projections for next year and our current enrollment this year, you'll see an increase of just about 49% for our charter school tuition. It's based on current enrollments and tuitions. And, and we saw that there's been an increase of students attending charter schools. That was one of the, the four or five areas that I presented on last week. So that is certainly a phenomenon based upon the current situation that we're, we're in and something that we are projecting out going forward. Overall, looking at 2.77% increase in this, in this area, largely due to salary obligations based on contractual obligations.
If I can just interject for a quick second, there are several areas in this section of the budget that are statedable. So some of that charter school tuition cost, our textbook costs, the BOCs costs that are here. These are all things that on the revenue side, we receive reimbursement for all or part, a portion of those expenses.
Thank you. Thank you for chiming in on that one. Important point. 2110, the FIT program formerly leaps and bounds, our triathlon, the William Street Triathlon. You'll see a pretty substantial increase there, 2110 400. Overall, in this area, it's an increase of $1,700 and the increase is there. However, the expenses remain the same. It's for the, the clocking system. And for the last several years, we've paid for that clocking system. It's similar to any road race that you would see where the students have the, the GPS chips that they place on their shoes and, and then allows them to time down to the hundreds of a second. But like I said, it's, it's now placed in the proper budget code, so it's just kind of matching the two up. 2110, the alternative school program. You'll see that the full $5,000 increase is related to contractual salary increases. The other line items there remain unchanged at 0%. 2110 enrichment program, materials and supplies, no change there, 0% increase. 2110 high school academy programs, once again, they remain flat and with no increase. I'll turn it over to Mr. Armstrong and talk a little bit about 2250 and the special education programs.
Good evening, everybody. I would be remiss if I didn't make just one comment about my friend, Pat Bruce. I have to say, Pat and I, I started at the middle school and she was there 20, 20 some years ago, we'll say it that way. And, and I remember her being wonderful then, working with my students in the computer lab or whatever, I think that's what we called it. But also with, you know, in my area, when I would call up Pat over the years and go, Pat, you know, I need this special device or a piece of assistive technology or software of some kind to help one of our teachers or programs or students. And it would take us, it would take, it would take some doing sometimes in the technology side to figure it out and adapt it into our systems, but she would always do it. If, if it was all possible, she would make it happen and it benefited our kids and our program. So thank you, Pat, and good luck. As far as the budget, this first group includes, the 2250 codes include the majority of our special education teachers in the districts, in the district as well as teacher aides. And also the BOCs services are, are in the 490 code are lumped into this. The, the one right off the bat, the 2250 150, the home teaching, that's provided for both, for students with, that have disabilities and just gen ed students. That one, we were under budgeted a little bit in the past, so we have to, we had to bump it up this year to reflect some of our past spending. And also we are seeing an increase in the need for home teaching this year, well, really since the pandemic started. So that's the kind of catch up there. So that's a bit of an increase. As already pointed out several times, the contractual increases are, are there for teachers and our teacher aides. A lot of other items are zeroed out. We have a contract for OT and PT which shows a, a little bit of an increase that was already negotiated in a, a request for proposal, three-year proposal. I think we're in the second year of it, second or third year, I forget. The big one this year that is, is quite frankly, is a large, you know, a little bit over $300,000 increase that we hadn't anticipated is BOCs is changing. Everyone BOCs is changing how they service our children. So to be specific about it, many students that we had in a certain classroom size option of 1211, 12, 12 students, one teacher, one aide, they're basically doing away with their 1211s. They were under enrolled. And they're changing all those students over into 611s or 811 sized classrooms. And as a result, unfortunately, from a financial side at least, the cost per student is going up substantially. It could, in some cases, it could be as high as, you know, 20 to $25,000 per student. That's driving the main cost increase there. Cause, cause BOCs, when these 1211 classrooms were under enrolled, they were quote unquote, losing money or not getting their cost back. So they made a change. That's the main change plus some increases in speech programming. You'll see a little bit later, a little bit increase of increasing costs in counseling services for students that have been BOCs. So that is, that led to that 13% increase. So overall, in our budget area, at least for the 2250, with a 4, 4.85% increase, the majority of it came because of that one line item, the change in classroom program. Down, the next item is the 2255. That, that, I don't know why the state does this, but they address resource room teachers separately. That's the line item for our resource room teachers of the district. Again, that's a contractual increase of, for salary. Any questions, folks, so far? Otherwise, I'll turn it over. I think it goes back to Andy.
Thanks, John. So as, as we talked about earlier with some of the reallocation or reassignment of some of the costs from above. So 2259 are the programs for English language learner, learners are Ls. And what you see there is 2259 150. It says 100% increase, but that is just the, the reassignment from 21, 2110 150 above. So that is really not, not a change or an increase per se, besides the, the cost associated from year to year. Same thing with 2259 490. That's the cost of shifting the, the Ls to, from 2110 490 above. So it's just placing them in the, the new code for the, for the state. 2280 occupational education. What we're talking about there is, is harkness. I mean, you'll see a 70, about roughly a $71,000 decrease. The decrease is because of enrollment. From one year to the next, we have about 20 fewer students who will be attending harkness. And that's, that's the, what the decrease is attributable to. And just like above the, the two, the two, the 490, 2259 and 2280, 490 are addable as Ms. Phillips said earlier in the presentation. I'll turn, I think, back over to Ms. Phillips to talk a little bit about continuing education from, from above as well.
Yes, this is the second code for, that goes with the community education program. And there are no changes whatsoever to this section of the budget.
Similar theme with 2330 summer school. No changes to this section of the budget. 2610 school library. The only changes there are related to contractual salary increases. And you'll see that in that area, school library, looking at 3.35% increase. And then in 2610 video library and 2610 audio visual, there is no change in this area of the budget. So with that, I will. So no questions, I will send it over to Pat Bruce to talk about 2630.
All right. If I miss off on the screen. 2630 150 through 2630 162 are all salaries for the, for the team. And then if I go on to 2630, 201 is equipment and that is flat, not an increase in that line at all. 2632 20 is addable computer hardware. Addable computer hardware shows an increase of this year of $110,000. On this budget line covers new requests for technology in the classroom as well as covering the replacement cycle for Chromebooks and other existing classroom technology. The purchasing of the Chromebooks was done over multiple years, starting in 2014. The end of life support on a Chromebook as governed by Google is a six-year cycle. So annually, a large portion of this budget line is funds allocated specifically for Chromebook replacements. There are other existing technology, but that's the bulk that we will be seeing in this budget line this year and next, and, and in the upcoming years. 2630 400 for contractual. This budget line covers contracts and operating costs for information services department, including licensing, support and maintenance contracts. There's a slight increase of $10,000, $10,833 to be exact. This increase is primarily due to 5% increase in the existing contracts along with some new contracts and increased licensing counts that we, we did this year. We, we expect to do this upcoming year. 2630 401 is flat, no change there in contractual expenses on that side. 2630 460 addable computer software. This budget line covers all the instructional classroom subscription renewals for K12. There's a slight increase this year of $32,000 due to the annual cost increases as well as the renewal of new requests made this year that will be renewed in the upcoming year. Software subscriptions as well on, will continue to have annual increases as we continue enhancing instruction with software subscriptions in the classroom. 2630 490. Has it? As an increase of $78,000. That is primarily from mandatory costs associated with running the network along with instructional equipment, student software, learning licenses that we purchased through BOCs, our Microsoft Office and server licensing, along with Google Enterprise, which we did this year for remote learning and our MiFi units that we are supplying students that are in need of internet access. 2630 500 is flat this year with no increase, as well as 2630 501 is flat with no increases. 89% of the increases are related to equipment supply and mandatory BOCs increases in this budget section. And if there's any questions, I'll take them.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Just chime in some of those things. It's amazing, some of the 2630 490, I look at that, Google Enterprise and MiFi, it's a little long conversations that went in there and just say thank you again, Pat, because, you know, we talked about the one-to-one and then all some of the, the software supports and hardware supports that, that you, your team put in place to support our students and our teachers from last year roughly around this time until, till present day, very much appreciated.
Thank you.
2805 attendance services. What you see there is the, the, in that area, the only increases that we see are the contractual salary increases that come out to 3.4% of that total. 2810 guidance services. All the increases, once again, are contractual services or contractual services related to the annual costs for the contracts that we have. Overall, 3.93%. 2815, this area deals with health services. So we're talking about our contractual increases there with, with nurses, non-instructional salary increases as well. And you'll see a fairly significant dip there of about 70%. Ms. Phillips, I think, explained that one very nicely with, and also did a fantastic job springing into action, securing the contractor, redoing the contract with our medical director to make it eligible for BOCs aid with 2060 490 above. So that's, it's not a real decrease in, in the sense that, that is from above that that was now BOCs addable. So overall, the full increase is related to contractual salary increases in this area, but mostly offset by the school physician move to the line above that Ms. Phillips already discussed. Turn it back over to, I think, John Armstrong here to talk a little bit about 2820.
Yeah, for psychological services, those line items represent our district school psychologist staff throughout, throughout our, our seven buildings. And then again, that's the, it's status quo in terms of staffing, so it's just the contractual increase. Moving down to social work services, it mostly reflects district school social workers throughout our buildings. But in that 490 code, it also has the BOCs service. That is, again, that reflects to some increased need for BOCs social work or counseling service for students placed there. And I think that probably is the, the larger increase, just to an increased enrollment or need for that service for kids with social emotional needs. Other than that, everything is pretty much status quo.
2850 is a co-curricular activities. So in the instructional salaries portion is where you're going to find the stipends for all of our extracurricular activities, music, clubs, class of senior class, National Honor Society, et cetera. Contractually, those, those stipends are slated for a 2% increase. And this amount also includes the level changes and the new stipends that were included on the staffing spreadsheet. In terms of equipment, contractual and materials and supplies, these are related to the music department almost 100%. We've had a few years where we have not been able to do any increases for them. Realistically, their contractual expenses are increasing each year. Their equipment amount that we have here is a $21,000 increase, but much more was requested, so it certainly has been pared down. And in conjunction with the next section, there are some increases that we are including in the budget for now that we're also doing equally between the music and the athletic department. So overall, for co-curricular, the increase is about $60,000. About 3% of that is related to the addition of the positions or the changes in the stipends. And then the rest is just making an attempt at this point to increase some of the funds that we're attributing to our music department. Inner's classic athletics is our entire athletic program. As I indicated, As I indicated, the stipends contractually are slated to increase by two percent. We have the athletic director and their, their clerical staff in here for their contractual raises. And then between equipment contractual expenses, those increases are really equating to the same increases above in the music department. So for contractual, there is a three percent increase to cover rising costs of their annual contracted services, but also in additional thirty thousand dollars to increase our athletic trainer hours. This was included in last year's budget in one of the phases for that athletic trainer hour increase. But we have, it ultimately didn't make the final budget. So again, just trying to gradually increase some of these areas where they've been held pretty flat and steady for years where their, but their costs are continually rising just with, as they would annually with most other contractual expenses. So all in all, proposed fifty-five thousand dollar increase for the athletic department. So our total instruction budget that we just presented is a two point six million dollar increase. Again, this is the major portion of our budget, sixty percent of our overall budget. Three point two-seven percent of this four point three percent total increase in the section of the budget is actually attributed to the contractual salary obligation. So and then there's also a large chunk that is attributed to the change in the special ed programming, predominantly the elimination of those BOSI's courses. So seventy percent of this increase is salaries. But again, there is nine hundred and sixty-eight of our nine hundred and eighty-two regular employees that are included in this section, their wages. Before we move on to the BOSI's budget, does anybody have any questions on just the instructional section of the budget? Okay. The BOSI's budget, we can kind of breeze through. We've already addressed many of these already. So and just what was presented tonight. So ten-ten-four-ninety is Board of Education BOSI's services. That is our policy manual updates, our employee handbook for and the difference is the fifteen hundred dollar difference is the addition of a code of conduct review for next year. Thirteen-ten-four-ninety is BOSI's services related to business administration. That is the board's internal claims audit service that they receive reports from. And the increase is due to just an annual increase in their service fee. Fourteen-twenty-four-ninety is our legal services through BOSI's. And it's also a public relations services. So there is a slight increase in the annual fee for the legal services. We use them for some personnel issues, some negotiations and contractual things. We also use their legal services to do student suspension hearings. The increase in this code is attributed to upgrades that we've made in our public relations communications program over the last few months. Fourteen-thirty-four-ninety, our personnel BOSI services. This is the certification service that we subscribe to through BOSI's. It is our absence management system, our subcalling system, A S O P. And there is a decrease, a small decrease, and that can be attributed to less subs being in A S O P. We use, we pay a per user fee. So if we have less users, we pay less. It's not exciting to have less substitutes using the system, but I guess I can be excited about a slight cost savings. Sixteen-seven-seventy-four-ninety is BOSI's service costs related to central printing and mailing. And this is any printing that we get preferable pricing from BOSI's through the bid process that we can do through BOSI's. And then also a graphic design service that is attributed to those communications updates. Sixteen-eighty-four-ninety, BOSI's services related to central data processing. This is literally every student operation system, e-school, Web Edge, RTIM, our test scoring and scanning data warehouse, New York State data collection, our financial system, WinCap, our budget mailer, our facility system, our applicant tracking system, my learning plan, frontline, our servers, website, internet, I could go on and on. Most things which Pat Bruce has put into place. And the increases here are attributed to our network upgrades and some cybersecurity enhancements that were required. Nineteen-eighty-one-four-ninety-one are our capital administrative and rental fees. It's basically the cost of BOSI's operating and us participating with them. And that is a small increase. Twenty-sixty through twenty-eight-fifty-five has already been presented tonight. I guess the few things that I can elaborate on. We talked about twenty-sixty, that being the ship, a big part of that being the shift of the school physician. In addition to that, we have a safety consultation service and some additional modules in a financial system to assist with completion of new New York State financial requirements. The twenty-one-ten-four-ninety, you're, you're going to see that large increase because of the movement of the ELL itinerants to its own unique budget code, as you can see below, twenty-two-fifty-nine-four-ninety. Besides that, the special education twelve-one-one classroom changes has impacted this. And other than that, we've really gone through it all in detail earlier. So overall, and I think this might be still a pretty low BOSI's budget to budget increase compared to usual. It's just under six hundred thousand dollars. Majority of the costs that are shown here are adable, our BOSI's aid ratio lingers around sixty-five to seventy percent. So any expenses, any, most expenses incurred through BOSI's through these budget codes are adable at the sixty-five to seventy percent ratio in the following year. So that is all I have for tonight. It's weird to not be able to look at your faces when you're screen sharing. I didn't like it. So I don't know your reactions. I see a lot of smiles. So that's good, I think. But does anyone have any questions about any of the budget things that were presented tonight? All right. Well, just to talk about moving forward, our next budget work session is April twelfth and that will very likely be the final budget work session before the full budget is presented to the Board of Education for approval at their, their next meeting in April. Between now and then, we will be working hard to fine tune all of the pieces of the budget. We'll be looking for areas that we can reduce budget numbers. We will be finalizing a lot of contractual expenses. So we may see some budget shifts due to that. We also will be waiting for New York State to finalize and pass a budget, which usually happens by March thirty-first, so that last week of March or first week of April. And that will really ultimately drive what the rest of the revenue side of the budget looks like and what our expenditure, total expenditure budget looks like too. So there's a lot of work to be done between now and the next work session. But we look forward to coming to you with the, at the next work session with a total picture of the overall budget, both on the expenditure and revenue side and further some of our conversations.
All right. Thank you so much, all of you who presented today. And thank you again to Pat Bruce. Congratulations. I hope that you thoroughly enjoy retirement. I know I may have a spreadsheet calculating my retirement that runs pretty much constantly. So I congratulate you. And that was our last item. So move on to adjournment. But again, as Jamie mentioned, April twelfth is our next budget work session at six-thirty PM. And our, our next regular meeting is March eighth at seven PM. Those will both be video conference as we are today. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor? I, anyone against? Motion carries. All right. Everyone have a legendary night.
The legendary mic.
Ah, always.
I'm gonna use it all of my meetings tomorrow.
Bye, guys. Good night.